2:31 on the official risk watch. And Senator, welcome back to the Appropriations Committee. And we will run through the whole introduction process again. We have taxation with us this afternoon on the inner horseshoe. So starting again on my right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Linda Valentino and I'm State Senator for District 31 in Saco, which is Saco Old Witches Beach, Bucksden, Thomas and Lumenton.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Gaye Grant and I represent House District 3, Witches Gardens and Farmingdale, right down the road.
Good afternoon. I'm Linda Samborn. I represent part of Coro. It's House District 106.
Good afternoon. I'm Representative Bodine. I represent the citizens of Oakland and Sydney.
Hello. I'm Lucy Rock. I'm from the House District 28, Sydney, 20, which is part of San Antonio.
Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Frye. I represent the House District 144, which is part of Angkor and part of Coro.
Hello. I'm Eric Jorgensen, representing House District 41, Erie and Coro.
Hello. I'm Jeff Timberlake. I represent District 75, Colonel Dean of Public Affairs.
I'm Tom Windsor and I represent District 71, which includes Hamilton, Mallard, West Parish and Sweden.
Welcome. I'm Heidi Rottweiler. I proudly represent part of Lewiston and the House Chair of Appropriations.
And Jim Hamper, Senate District 19, from Oxford, with 13 towns in western Maine. And we will move down into the inner horseshoe with Senator McCormick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for inviting us for this joint hearing. I'm Nora McCormick. I represent Senate District 14, which is 11 municipalities in southern Denver County.
Good afternoon. I'm Nate Libby. I proudly represent the city of Lewiston and the main city.
Good afternoon. I'm Paul Chase. I represent District 46, which is Durham, Durham, North Park, North.
Good afternoon. I'm Matt Moonen. I represent part of Portland and the house.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom Schofield. I am from Well, representing House District 112, which is the middle of Franklin County and some towns in Somerset County.
Good afternoon and thank you, Chairs. I'm Kate Tettler and I represent all of the town, tops of House District 54.
Good afternoon. I'm Kara Sueforth. I represent House District 95, which includes my hometown of Appleton, as well as Hope, Warren and part of Union.
Good afternoon. I'm Stedman Seavy. I represent the towns of Kennymont, Kennymont, Pollock and Baker.
Hello. I'm Representative Steve Stanley. I represent District 143, with East Barnock and Barnock and Medway, Patton and Small Park, the unorganized area.
My name is Adam Good. I represent House District 127, part of Angkor, serve as a House Chair.
And our committee analysts is Maureen Dawson and committee clerk is Mary Ann McFasters. Today we have public hearing on LD 138, an act to update references to the United States Internal Revenue Code of 1986, contained in the number one statute, decouple federal bonus depreciation deductions and create a main capital investment credit. And I'm very pleased to have Commissioner Rosen with us today, who will explain to you the contents of the bill that I've just presented. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, am I jumping the gun earlier? Senator Hamper, Representative Rottendo, and members of the Joint Standing Committee on Appropriations and Financial Affairs, Senator McCormick, Representative Good and members of the Direct Committee on Taxation. I'm Richard Rosen, acting commissioner of Department of Administrative Financial Services, and I'm here today to present and speak in support of LD 138. This legislation, commonly known as the Conformity Bill, is submitted annually by the Department of Administrative Financial Services to update the reference to the United States Internal Code, Revenue Code, entitled 36. The main legislature must annually review amendments to the code since the last conformity date to determine whether it wants to conform to some or all of the federal changes that impact main tax law. LD 138 proposes to update the Title 36 reference to the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended through December 31, 2014, with certain exceptions. LD 138 is emergency legislation that applies retroactively to January 1, 2014, and any prior tax years as specifically provided by the code. Maine's conformity to the federal code as amended primarily affects the state's income tax laws, as these laws are substantially based on provisions of the code. December 31, 2013 was the last date that Maine's conformity, of Maine's conformity to the federal code. The Federal Tax Increase Prevention Act of 2014 enacted this last December, retroactively extended a number of federal tax law changes that have significant impact on Maine's tax revenue. Because of the enactment of this act and other federal tax legislation with less significant impact on main taxes, the administration is recommending that the conformity date in Maine law be changed to December 31, 2014, and that the state continue to conform to those provisions which we previously conform to. Specifically, enactment of LD 138 will continue Maine's conformity to Section 179 expensing for small businesses, the teacher expense deduction, and the deductibility of primary mortgage insurance. There are many other provisions of the act that the state will continue to conform to, but these parts of the law are not estimated to have a meaningful impact on state revenues. Consistent with previous conformity bills, the administration is recommending Maine decouple its individual and corporate income taxes from bonus depreciation. Maine has consistently decoupled from federal bonus depreciation since 2002. However, to provide an incentive for similar property placed in service, in Maine, the bill extends a capital investment credit tied to bonus depreciation, attributable to the depreciation deduction claimed by a taxpayer under bonus depreciation at the federal level with respect to the property placed in service in Maine during the taxable year. A similar capital investment credit was also available for tax years 2011, 2012, and 2013, and the intent of this bill is to extend that again for consistency to 2014. The Office of Tax Policy estimates that enactment of LD 138 will reduce general fund revenue by approximately $16 million in fiscal year 15, and increase general fund revenue by $107,000 in FY '16, and increase by $4.6 million in FY '17. Staff are here for main revenue services, and will also be available at the work session to assist the committee. At that time, I'd be happy to do my best to answer any questions you may have now.
Questions from the committee, Commissioner Rosen and Senator Valentino.
Thank you very much. Will Dr. Allen be testifying?
He'll be. He's available now if the committee would like to respond to questions, or later at the work session.
Okay. My question then, Commissioner Rosen, is on the main capital investment credit for 2014. And you said that it stems a capital investment credit that we've all, that we've done in 2011, 2012, and 2013. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is that a new program that has been established? I guess I'm not sure on that, because when I see an investment credit, I had talked over to Fane and I asked them if this was a new program. They hadn't heard about it, and I was just curious if it had any relationship to the C Capital Tax Credit or the New Market Tax Credit that was administered. So I'm just wondering about this new investment program and how it's administered and who takes advantage of it, and what does it cost?
Do I have, with the chairs, like to have Dr. Allen come up and respond to that question?
I don't have a good problem with that at all. If you'd like, we'll do a tag team here.
Good afternoon. Senator Valentino. The main investment tax credit was created in 2011 by the legislature, based on a recommendation from the governor to conform to bonus depreciation for the 2011 and 2012 tax years. The legislature, through their work, decided that rather than fully conforming to bonus depreciation, which would have allowed companies in Maine to receive accelerated depreciation of our assets that they invested around the country, that they would rather provide an incentive for investments here in the state of Maine. So in the 125th legislature, the main investment tax credit was created, and it's tied to federal bonus depreciation, but it's only for investments here in the state of Maine. The legislature, the governor and the legislature extended that credit beyond 2012 and 2013, when the federal government extended bonus depreciation for the 2013 tax year. The federal government has extended bonus depreciation again for the 2014 tax year, and the governor is recommending that we continue to have the main investment tax credit.
Follow, Mr. Chair. I'm curious. You said that it was created in 2011 because we did not fully conform to the federal bonus depreciation at the time, and this was a way to attract investment here into Maine. So if we did not fully conform in 2011 to the federal government for tax conformity, and we created this program, in this bill, are we also asking to partially conform to the federal, or are we looking to totally conform to the federal and still keep this program?
A third option. The 138, basically, essentially what LD 138 does is decouples the state once again from bonus depreciation, but extends the main investment tax credit, which is tied to federal bonus depreciation, but only for investments here in the state of Maine. So in a sense, we've decoupled from bonus depreciation, want to get once again, but the governor is recommending we continue with the main investment tax credit as the mechanism we've been using to encourage investment here in the state of Maine.
I'm still confused, but I'll ask more later.
Yeah.
Oh, unless I can ask him.
Representative Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Dr. Allen, thanks for being here. Just so I understand, does the bill fully conform? The bill does not fully conform?
The bill fully conforms on all provisions of the Tax ULE Act that was passed by Congress in December, with the exception of bonus depreciation. The bill does not conform to federal bonus depreciation. Instead, it creates or continues the main investment tax credit, which is an investment tax credit in the state of Maine for investments here in the state of Maine, which is tied to federal bonus depreciation.
So why would we not fully conform just to bonus depreciation instead of doing this?
It was the policy of the administration and the legislature in the 125th when we first created the main investment tax credit, that rather than strictly conforming to bonus depreciation, which would have rewarded businesses for investment anywhere in the country, that they wanted to target the incentive, the benefit to companies when they invested here in the state of Maine. So the way to do that, the lawyers tell us, is that you have to create a credit and do it through a deduction. You create a credit, tie it back to federal bonus depreciation, but only for investments here in the state of Maine.
Have we ever fully conformed?
I believe we fully conformed to the original bonus depreciation in 2001, and perhaps in 2002, and then never conformed after that point until 2011, when the main investment tax credit was created. In a sense, conform, but only for main investors.
And then, I think, do I have one more? And I think I'd ask a lot of different credits going forward, committee. I know this is a different kind of scenario, but I think we have the better value programs for equipment, and bonus depreciation is something similar to that that's supposed to incentivize purchasing of equipment, from how I understand it. But I think, and of course, there's a lot of media around this federally when it happened, but it's confusing to me as to how we would incentivize purchasing of equipment that was already purchased in the past year. I think there's like two tiers of whether we couple or decouple from bonus depreciation and separate credit here that we have. And I guess I'm concerned with attempting to incentivize behavior that's already happened. And that seems a little bit weird. If we were to incentivize behavior, my gut feeling would be to incentivize future behavior.
I guess I got to tag team.
And thank you, Representative.
Representative Good, I, two points I'd just like to respond to. One, you're absolutely correct. In 2011, the tax package that was adopted, the expensing and this credit related to bonus depreciation, of course, was intended to incentivize investment coming out of the 2008, 2009 recession. The intent here, since that point, based on history in 2012 and 2014, in terms of the posture of the state, has been to continue, continue to maintain the credit as the US Code has continued to extend the bonus depreciation. So the assumption here, I think the unfortunate position that we find ourselves in as a state, like so many, is this process now of Congress making a determination of whether to extend these credits at the very last minute, at the end of the calendar year, rather than doing so upfront, so that it's clear to everyone. But I think the intent that's being communicated with this bill is based on the history of the last three or four years, that it had been the policy of the state to provide essentially Maine's version of bonus depreciation, as long as the federal government continues to extend it at the federal level, and to provide that incentive as well through the credit process at the state level. So implied in that, I believe, is the policy posture, that if even at the 11th hour, Congress extended retroactively for 2014, that it would be the intent of the state to attempt to maintain its commitment to that program as well.
Representative Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Dr. Allen, thanks for being here. Just so I understand, does the bill fully conform? The bill does not fully conform?
The bill fully conforms on all provisions of the Tax ULE Act that was passed by Congress in December, with the exception of bonus depreciation. The bill does not conform to federal bonus depreciation. Instead, it creates or continues the main investment tax credit, which is an investment tax credit in the state of Maine for investments here in the state of Maine, which is tied to federal bonus depreciation.
So why would we not fully conform just to bonus depreciation instead of doing this?
It was the policy of the administration and the legislature in the 125th when we first created the main investment tax credit, that rather than strictly conforming to bonus depreciation, which would have rewarded businesses for investment anywhere in the country, that they wanted to target the incentive, the benefit to companies when they invested here in the state of Maine. So the way to do that, the lawyers tell us, is that you have to create a credit and do it through a deduction. You create a credit, tie it back to federal bonus depreciation, but only for investments here in the state of Maine.
Have we ever fully conformed?
I believe we fully conformed to the original bonus depreciation in 2001, and perhaps in 2002, and then never conformed after that point until 2011, when the main investment tax credit was created. In a sense, conform, but only for main investors.
And then, I think, do I have one more? And I think I'd ask a lot of different credits going forward, committee. I know this is a different kind of scenario, but I think we have the better value programs for equipment, and bonus depreciation is something similar to that that's supposed to incentivize purchasing of equipment, from how I understand it. But I think, and of course, there's a lot of media around this federally when it happened, but it's confusing to me as to how we would incentivize purchasing of equipment that was already purchased in the past year. I think there's like two tiers of whether we couple or decouple from bonus depreciation and separate credit here that we have. And I guess I'm concerned with attempting to incentivize behavior that's already happened. And that seems a little bit weird. If we were to incentivize behavior, my gut feeling would be to incentivize future behavior.
I guess I got to tag team.
And thank you, Representative.
Representative Good, I, two points I'd just like to respond to. One, you're absolutely correct. In 2011, the tax package that was adopted, the expensing and this credit related to bonus depreciation, of course, was intended to incentivize investment coming out of the 2008, 2009 recession. The intent here, since that point, based on history in 2012 and 2014, in terms of the posture of the state, has been to continue, continue to maintain the credit as the US Code has continued to extend the bonus depreciation. So the assumption here, I think the unfortunate position that we find ourselves in as a state, like so many, is this process now of Congress making a determination of whether to extend these credits at the very last minute, at the end of the calendar year, rather than doing so upfront, so that it's clear to everyone. But I think the intent that's being communicated with this bill is based on the history of the last three or four years, that it had been the policy of the state to provide essentially Maine's version of bonus depreciation, as long as the federal government continues to extend it at the federal level, and to provide that incentive as well through the credit process at the state level. So implied in that, I believe, is the policy posture, that if even at the 11th hour, Congress extended retroactively for 2014, that it would be the intent of the state to attempt to maintain its commitment to that program as well.
Representative Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Going along those lines, that's my question. I guess I'm thinking about the retroactivity. So I wasn't super familiar with this, so I had to read up on it a little bit. And from what I understand, this bonus depreciation credit on the federal level expired at the end of 2013. Is that correct?
Yes, a whole host of credits, this being one of them.
So it expired in 2013, and then a full year later, basically a couple of weeks ago, Congress passed the bill reinstating.
Correct.
So I guess my frustration with this is that any business that made these kinds of expenditures, investing in equipment, in the year 2014, did so after the credit expired at the end of 2013, with full knowledge, hopefully, that it had expired and that they were making these equipment purchases without that credit being available to them. Does that sound right?
I think the way I would describe it is that if you look at the history of congressional action, they, Congress has unfortunately moved into this mode of extending these credits at the end of the year. So this isn't the first year, but this has happened again in the end of 2013. And that if, in fact, the expectation is that that will occur again, and of course, there was discussion at the national level during the calendar year 2014, what will Congress do, when will they act, will they extend again, with the extenders as they were all referred to. I think there was certainly an anticipation, by some, that they would extend again based on that national discussion. Regardless, the fact remains that once they do that and take action, the state then is confronted with our policy decision. Do we continue to maintain conformity as best we can on this range of these other multiple provisions that make up the list of extenders? And among those, this credit as it relates to the bonus depreciation being one.
Follow.
Sure.
Thank you.
I won't ask you to defend Congress's behavior. I don't think that's fair. But I guess, I mean, if we could all agree that this credit is a good idea, and I've actually read that both the Democratic Party and Republican Party's tax reform packages at the federal level eliminate it moving forward, so there seems to be some dispute on whether it's even a good idea in the first place. But if we can agree it's a good idea, and that we want to incentivize this kind of investment, equipment purchases in the future, you know, that's one thing. But I'm having a hard time understanding why we should reward these investments that have already happened. I mean, if we want to encourage future investment, fine, that's great. But why should we do this for an investment that these companies made with the understanding at the time they made them that the tax credit had expired?
I think fundamentally, it's a competitive posture question. I mean, is it the competitiveness of the state of Maine compared to other states? And if we, if we begin to travel down a path of further decoupling and a greater disadvantage compared to other states that do ultimately end up conforming with the changes even at the end of the year, we put ourselves at a competitive disadvantage.
I'm going to like to refer my list. Senator, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Rosen, thank you for being with us today. So this credit was set to expire, is it December 31, 2014? Is that correct?
The, 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 expired at the end of 2013.
At the end of 2013.
Correct.
So, you know, certainly aware than anybody else is that tax forms are printed now and need to be printed. If we pass this bill and extend our version of the credit, that means you'll have to reprint new tax forms. Is that correct?
The, I'm not sure in terms of the printing anymore, how many are actually printed, to be honest with you. The federal filings have been now accepted by starting January 20, 20, I think, in terms of filing federally. I don't, I really don't believe that there is a significant cost associated necessarily with portion of printing or reprint forms, because I think much of this guidance really is provided through a process of everything from the tax preparers and the guidance that they receive from main revenue services. The guidance that's being issued currently, as it relates to this whole range of extenders, is that we are assuming the state will expand and will essentially continue the posture that we have maintained in 2011, 2012, and 2013, and then apply that in 2014. And I can, we can certainly get you information in terms of the printing costs that would be involved.
So the recommendation to tax preparers and companies that assist businesses with taxes is that MRS assumes the legislature will pass this bill. That's correct.
That's correct. That is, that is, you have to essentially take a posture at the launch of the new filing year in terms of guidance offered, and the guidance that's currently being offered is to proceed as though Maine does conform. If the legislature chooses to reject that and Maine does not conform, then obviously then any of those returns that are filed could be revisited. That has been, that has been the traditional approach in past years. Again, it's unfortunate to be in this last minute position, but we are, we, and not just Maine, obviously, all states are reacting to the extension in 2014 of these credits in the state.
Thank you. Representative Samborn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just wondering, my understanding is that this depreciation, deduction of tax mostly really big businesses, not small businesses, which is the great majority of businesses in Maine. I'm just wondering, do you know the number of businesses this actually affects for what some of those businesses would be?
I'm sure we can, we can provide in terms of a global number. In terms of big and small, for the really big businesses, of course, it only applies to investment that they have made in the state of Maine. However, there are a significant number of small corporations that are impacted by this homegrown, Maine-based, small corporations, subchapter S corporations that file as a pastor on the individual income tax. So I think that, I think you'd be surprised how many, I don't want to say, well, I always say local, as opposed to multinational corporations, Maine-based essentially corporations that are impacted by this.
Thanks.
Additional question? Yes. Representative Wood.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, I was curious about this understanding, sort of in a more general sense, the, I guess for lack of a better word, the level of sacredness that surrounds conformity issues. And I'm looking at the budget packers that we're considering going forward, and it includes a elimination of all deductions, for example. Isn't that going to throw us totally out of conformity, or is that just a, is that a totally different issue? Obviously, some of these are business income taxes, some of them personal income taxes, but it seems to me like some of them, I just think they've got a better sense of what we're going into.
Sure. No, I think that's actually, thank you, Representative. That's an excellent perspective. I think what we're dealing with now, of course, with this bill, is Maine's current tax code. And Maine's current tax code has a very high rate for both individual filers and corporate rate, about eighth highest in the nation, applying at a very modest level of income, and a series of credits, exemptions, and deductions that are designed to try to bring that rate down as it applies to actual filings. What we're, what we're proposing in the budget bill is moving away from that model, ultimately to working away from the individual income tax in total, and on the path of achieving that goal, really dramatically reducing the individual rate, dramatically reducing the corporate rate, flattening it out, and eliminating the need for credits, exemptions, and deductions. So essentially, you have a status quo model that's high rate, hits a low level, and so we're seeking to conform to the federal code as much as possible to pass on credits, exemptions, deductions. But ideally, the argument that we're making in the budget is that we can move to a significantly lower rate, making the state much more competitive than, clearly than the need for those credits, exemptions, and deductions is much less necessary, and you can move to a flatter, essentially a flat tax.
Thank you. So Tettler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Mr. President. Asking a question again about the main capital investment tax credit. If we perceive of this as a form of conformity...
exemptions, and deductions is much less necessary, and you can move to a flatter, essentially a flat tax.
Thank you. So, Tepworth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Rosen. Asking a question again about the Maine Capital Investment Tax Credit. If we perceive of this as a form of conformity with bonus depreciation, my question is, this has been going on for several years. Are other states choosing to conform with bonus depreciation? What are other states choosing to do about this issue of bonus depreciation?
I don't know for this particular legislation what other states are doing, but I know in the past it's been all over the place, but there's some states that automatically conform with federal changes. There's other states like Maine where the legislature has to affirm their continuing conformity to federal tax law changes. So it's been all over the place, starts with other states.
May I follow up? Could you present us at some point with some examples of some of the ways that states have chosen not to conform in the past?
Certainly. I mean, in most cases, they just don't conform, they make taxpayers add back bonus depreciation, they make taxpayers add back the additional expensing of the Section 179. The business has to keep two sets of rules, one set of depreciation at the federal level and one set of rules for the different states that they're operating.
Thank you very much.
Senator Gates.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner. I think this is not the first time that a bill like this has been used by the legislature.
It's an annual event.
And for how many years has this been going on, Bill?
How many years have you had a tax reform?
We have a tax conformity bill every year, regardless of whether Congress acts or doesn't act just to update Title 36, again, for the legislature to annually affirm that they want to remain conforming. You see, you feel, this may be for Dr. Allen as much as you need to, but do you think that the business community has come to expect that each year we will, we've been waiting for Congress to do their thing and that each year we will then act, you feel this is an expectation in the business community, we will pass something like this?
Yes. I mean, I, again, under healthier times at the national level, it was obviously, we had it performed well in advance. Congress were back, they would establish a tax code on a go-forward basis, and the state would have gone through the conformity exercise. And so that part is not new. The difference, the pattern that has changed over the last few years is the last-minute action and the, and only applying for a single year. So this has become an annual event driven by congressional action. But yes, the, I think the business community's expectation based on history is that the state of Maine will do everything it can to conform.
Senator Valentino.
Thank you very much. A question on the tax conformity package that we have proposed. Will this conform everything to the federal government? So the estate tax will go from a $2 million exclusion to a 5.5?
No.
So we're not conforming on that?
Correct. This is applying to the, to what has been referred to over the last four or five years as the extenders.
The extenders. And I see here Congress extended like all the energy tax extenders. Are those included in here? So we've, we've extended all the tax credits for residential energy and biofuel and?
Correct.
So that's all in there?
The teacher $250 deduction.
Okay, but the estate tax is not going from 2 to 5.5?
Correct.
So we pick and choose?
No, it's just, the tax is essentially not seen as, in terms of the annual authorization at the congressional level, is not a component of this extender package.
Okay, so it's the extent. And a follow-up question. And going back to the Maine Capital Investment Credit, I guess why I was probably a little more drawn to it is that it's all underlined. So when I see it underlined, it means it's new language, and you're saying that if I looked up in Section 5219, I would see this currently in there?
Correct.
That's not, it's not new, even though it's underlined in here?
Correct.
Okay.
It's new to 2014, go forward from 2013.
Okay. And the other question I have on that, that carry forward, it says that the tax, the credit cannot reduce the tax to below zero, but, so it's not refundable, and that way you can carry it forward for 20 years. But the recapture provision is only for 12 months, so you can buy a piece of equipment, have it in the state of Maine, and have it here for 12 months, and as long as it's here for 12 months, you could move it out of state and you can still have that recapture provision on your income tax for the next 20 years because the equipment's no longer here. That, I just wanted clarification from Dr. Allen.
I think he's been in a given tax advice business.
Well, I'm just looking on that.
I think the recapture provision has been there since the start of the Maine Investment Credit. It is designed to prevent somebody from maybe purchasing the asset, having it here in Maine for a short period of time, then shipping it out of state and really using it out of state. And that's what the recapture provision is for.
No, I understand that, but I'm looking at it coupled with the carry forward, that you can carry forward that for 20 years, even if the equipment's no longer in the state.
Yep, I can look at that, have more information for argument.
Representative Newton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This might be for Dr. Allen, but maybe not. I would like to know if there are businesses who are taking advantage of this bonus depreciation credit in the form of the Maine Capital Investment Credit and taking advantage of bedding? Is that happening?
We have a way of knowing that necessarily, or? I think the easy answer is, I suspect that that is the case, that this equipment is, you know, like if you're putting in place a large piece of machinery here in the state of Maine that is likely eligible for the bedding program.